Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, April 15, 2015. Could I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Yeah.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith. Joy Winnie.
Yeah.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
We all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of both regular and executive session meetings, April 1st through 2015?
The second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll do it two. So those in favor of the regular minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those in favor of the executive session meeting? It's aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Okay, terrific. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council on something other than what's on the public hearings, please come to the podium. Not being seen, can move on. Communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Counselor Rist?
Well, we have a request from the Fire Chief to med city ordinance, fire code update, and a request from the police chief to add a stop sign on this section of Springer Chestnut Streets. I believe the first one, I would like to move that be sent to ordinance for review.
Second. I have a second. Remove the fire code update to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes.
And the second one, I believe, it goes to public safety, sir. Is that correct?
Yep.
Move it to public safety, yes.
Motion, a second, to move the stop sign to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes. I believe we do not have any correspondence, so Mayor, communications. Mayor Katcher?
She has nothing to say.
Okay, so as you can see, I just handed out the fiscal 2016 budget, and I just wanted to read the budget message, but before I did, I wanted to just mention that the House numbers came out, just came out today, and it looks like it's about, last check, maybe about two grand in our favor. So when you read about the, you know, the whole big news about how they increased this and increased that, it looks like about two grand for us, but two grand increase is better than two grand decrease. So anyway, as I said, I'm presenting the fiscal 16 budget to the councilors tonight and the residents, and it's in the total amount of $38,189,534. You know, we're all aware of the limitations and the challenges that the insufficient state funding, along with unfunded mandates, continue to have on all our city departments and services. Through the extraordinary efforts of our employees, we continue to provide services to our residents to the best of our ability. We will also aggressively pursue every avenue for funding changes and opportunities with our legislators, and will restructure, consolidate, to ensure and enhance cost-saving measures. And regarding, I think you will be noticing in the near future, a lot of different restructuring and consolidating, a lot of different things. I think 2016 is definitely going to be a year for a lot of changes. Our budget priorities have not changed and remain with education, public safety, public work, senior services, community development, culture, and recreation. We've once again surpassed the net school spending requirements. This year, it's estimated that our net school contribution will exceed the state-required amount by $894,640.37, which is even a little larger than last year. So very, I'm very happy with that, which demonstrates our priority for education excellence. I'm truly empowered and honored to work with the most dedicated and talented group of professionals. I greatly appreciate the understanding and cooperation they've provided. I'd especially like to acknowledge our Director of Finance, Melissa Zawatski, and the many hours spent laboring over the budget, along with our city auditor, Valerie Bernier. Their assistance and dedication during this preparation has been invaluable to me. And again, a complete copy of this budget is available for review in my office, the city clerk's office, and the library. And if anyone has any questions?
Counselor Winnie?
Mayor, I've had some people ask me why we haven't put the budget up on our website.
We do. We always have it on our website. What we have is the summary. You know, we don't put the whole entire, as you can see, the whole entire book, but we do. And we will.
Okay.
And you probably also have had questions about our website being down. It was down for over a week, and it was put back up on Friday, and still making sure our systems analyst has been going over it to make sure that, you know, it's updated and keeping it updated.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there hard copies available for?
That, your hard copy?
You don't put the entire budget online.
That's right.
Are there hard copies available for people to come and get?
People, as I told you, like where, people can get them in the loo, people can come in, sit down in the library and review it, city clerk's office, my office, you know, they can pick up, go in the conference room, and sometimes they do. If they want copies, they pay for per page like, you know, any other person coming in for copies of anything. But more than likely, it's the summary that they're interested in. There's very few people that would ever want a copy of the entire budget, but they're welcome to it, and we will provide it to them, just like anyone else that asks for copies of any, any public documents.
Okay. And you were talking about a lot of restructuring and consolidation happening. Can you speak more to that?
No.
Mr. President, point of order, this is not on the agenda. We cannot speak in detail.
Yeah, please just be in the direction.
My apologies, counselor.
Okay. Any other questions? No. Okay. Anything more for Mayor, communications?
Um, I think that's enough for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hagan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the FY 2016 municipal budget be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
A motion, a second, to move the FY 2016 budget to finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes. Okay, we can move on to standing committees, rules and government relations. Counselor Rist?
Yes, Mr. President, I believe the administrative code request under new business will be sent to rules. I'd like to make a motion that both the 15-1 and 15-2 requests for administrative code requests be sent to the rules and government relations committee for review.
A motion, a second, to send the two administrative code requests to rules and government relations. Any additional comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes.
I will set a meeting at the next meeting when I have time to talk to the councilors on the committee.
Okay. Counselor Hagan, finance?
Yes, the first item is our next meeting will be a week from tonight, on April 22nd, Room 1, at 6:00 PM, at which time we'll be taking up some new requests that we have that'll be coming up, a new business, and also is a heads-up for both the administrative and the other members of the Finance Committee. We'll discuss dates to review the budget at that Wednesday meeting. I'd like to hopefully meet at least two and possibly three nights on that first week in May, but again, if everyone can kind of check their calendars before that meeting so we can hopefully set up the schedule. Next item is, I'd like to make, and I'll do it in one motion, I'd like to set three public hearings, all on interdepartmental transfers. One is for $6,000 for unanticipated professional services in the assessors department, one for $11,000 for unanticipated personal services in the inspectors department, and $23,000 for unanticipated expenses in the streetlight budget. And again, in form of motion, these are all to be set for a public hearing at our next meeting, which I believe is May 6th.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the three departmental transfers to finance for additional review. Any additional comments or discussion?
These are public.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we had a motion, a second, to set public hearings for the three departmental transfers. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes.
The other two items that are still currently on the agenda, we'll be taking up one of them tonight, under the supplemental appropriation of $600,000 in the public hearing section. And I would like to possibly deal with, unless any councilors object, the committee, subcommittee has reviewed the mayor and finance director's request to accept Chapter 260, Chapter 165 of the Acts of 2014, and we met at least twice during committee, we talked this over. And what it is, is it has absolutely no bearing on the amount of finances the mayor is earmarking for education. It just takes the retired teachers' health care and it's added to the unfunded, excuse me, the un, excuse me, before I get the proper wording. Yes, I'll have, it goes to the Chapter 70 net spending.
It's not Chapter 70, but we always report on your, you get an end-of-year report on school spending, and there are some things that are included in net school spending, which is always educators' pay, their insurance and alike, and then like busing is considered non-net spending. Right now, we consider retiree health insurance, non-net. This would move that into the net category.
Okay. This is just, if Melissa just presented, if I have this right, 127 districts don't have this, right? Most, the majority of cities and towns have it, correct?
You know, I don't know those numbers. I know that the question came out when they originally created this, this formula, and you could opt, I guess there was a box to check on the form, and most towns did not. And so, a lot of the towns that are having trouble meeting the net school spending petition that they should have the option to include this, because they should. And so, then, and now it's available as a decision for the council to make, whether we want to include this in net school spending or not net school spending. Still have to fund it, still have to pay it, that doesn't change. As the mayor just said, we exceed net school spending, so it's not something that we need today. However, this legislation must be adopted or not by June 1st, or we don't get the option again.
Okay. I believe the last time towns, cities had the option was in '94 when ed reform first passed, so this is the next time that the state has allowed it. It is, once we do it, though, it's not reversible, it's not something like next year, we can reverse it and go back. And also, it's a four-year, I believe a four-year, it goes in in four fiscal years, it doesn't all happen the first year, it goes in four years, and the next four years.
Counselor Hagan, is it not, is it on the agenda, aren't my?
Yes. It's right here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Whew. I know. Go ahead.
I don't know, I don't know if we have time for discussion.
Okay.
As we're bumping into the, but I do have a question.
I think we can continue.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we could continue the discussion.
Yeah, I think we have time. So if you was, there's something you want to say, counselor?
Well, I'm just curious what the rationale for doing it would be.
I think if the mayor or the finance director, probably his, the...
I think the reason that it came around again at this date was because you're probably aware that some different school districts, thankfully not ours, hopefully never ours, are having problems meeting net school spending, and there's fines for that. And what they're doing is, you know, trying to, by adopting this, this would, first of all, they want to waive the fines that these communities should have or could have received in the last few years by not meeting the, you know, those requirements, and this would help them to meet those requirements. So kind of a double-fold. And it's legislation, so this is something that we just presented to the councilors, because you are the legislative body, and for you to discuss, to look at, and to consider. It just happens to come around with a deadline. It's, you know, the deadline is June, but it's definitely 100% your decision as to what you'd like to do with it. But we look at it, I think we've used the, Counselor Hagan, I think we've used the wording a couple of times, it's just a reporting method. And for us, in no way, shape, or form, does it take into any effect what we as a community would provide for our schools. As you noted, we're, you know, going above and beyond, and will continue to want to.
Counselor Kozinski? Okay. Perhaps the mayor could, or Melissa, could help us, I think by understanding the difference between net school spending and non-net, and then, given that framework, it would be easier for us to understand why this matter should be one or the other. Is there a quick definition?
Well, I, and again, just, come on, Melissa. Again, I think what Melissa had stated too, is at one point in time, back many years, it was just a boxer tech, check. So it's the way that cities and towns report it. You either report it as net or non-net, you know, it's...
But so, my understanding is that net, we would make this net school spending, is that correct? And by doing so, net school spending is basically the monies that we spend to educate students directly, is that?
This, this is for teachers', this is for teachers' retirement.
I understand what it's for, but I'm asking, the definition of net school spending would help, I think, councilors to decide this matter, if we understood why this fits in one category or another category.
How to explain that?
And I had thought that net school, that net school spending was the money that we spend, so if teachers are, if teacher salaries are part of what we, an expense that we have that's direct for, to educate our students, as opposed to, let's say, a capital expense like a driveway.
So you probably want to know what's net and what's non-net.
Yes.
Is what you're, I think what you're trying to ask.
I think that would help us to figure out which category this should be.
So in your budget book there, is estimated net school spending, Section 3.
Section 3, okay.
So there, the largest portion of non-net spending is busing, and then the next portion of that is buildings. So like the new school building is not considered net. And then, for some communities, teachers' retirement is considered net, and for other communities, teachers' retirement is considered non-net. And it really all depended on how it was set forth when the, when they designed it. Net school spending is a required spending amount. We exceed the required spending amount at this time.
Okay. So Melissa, just, again, this would, what this would do would be, in the future, it would give the city a little more flexibility if we got closer to, you know, we had even worse finding, you know, fiscal times, financial times, that would give us a little more of flexibility of meeting that net school spending, if, I mean, which we're exceeding, as the mayor said earlier, by $800,000 this year.
Exactly, and more this year than, we've exceeded it more this year than we did last year, too.
But not as much as several years ago.
Right. And so it's a, you know, maybe what you're thinking of is in the future, and also, it does not affect this fiscal year.
Okay. Counselor Derby?
So I think, you know, another question I have, is the required net school spending a static number from the state? Or is it a dynamic number that changes each year that, you know?
It changes every year, every year.
Okay. I mean, I guess my only, my only concern would be that this is something that we would use to get us closer to a goal while, at the same time, you know, giving some flexibility to cut. And I don't, and I feel like, I don't, I don't want to give any more flexibility to cut the schools.
That's your... That could be a, right, that's your prerogative, and that could be a perception.
And I also, I just felt like, if we didn't bring it to the council, then we made a decision for you.
Right, well, it should, anything that comes our way to be, you know, any type of legislature should be presented to you for you to make, for, first of all, to you see it, know that it's available, and be able to make a choice.
Counselor Winnie?
I think it makes sense to move it over to the net spending. It is part of the cost of educating our students. Salaries, retirement, health benefits, all the benefits that all of the city employees reap from the city are direct costs to the taxpayers, and we should record it as that. So I think it makes absolute sense to put it into the net spending.
Okay. Counselor Rist?
Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I interpreted this was, it's a way of reporting that now retirement can be used, and God forbid, if we ever get so close to net spending, or net spending quota, whatever the term would be, we could use retirement spending to match it so we don't get fined. Am I right about that?
Yes.
So it's just a way of reporting to prevent us, God forbid, if we ever got that close, but we have been well above it for years. It's just to keep us from also giving the state a fine because we didn't get there. Some year, we might have to say, well, we have retirement, or we're going to include retirement now, to help us meet net spending. Is that correct?
Well, I think that once it's voted in place, there's a schedule set out, set out by Department of Education to phase it in, and we will, we will then begin to report it that way. It phases in over a four-year period.
Okay. Counselor... I have no problem keeping this back on the agenda if, like, Counsel Derby or others have more questions and want to bring it up in the next meeting. I mean, I know it's a, it's a, because it's an education item, I mean, I certainly want councilors comfortable that they have enough time, and I certainly don't mind taking it and not asking for a vote tonight, if that's, if there's councilors here that still want more time to study it. It was approved by the Subcommittee 3-0, but certainly the other councilors, you know, I would more than be happy to give them extra time to study it.
I would like more time.
Can I just see a show of hands of how many people would like to, tend to hear more about this? Two, three?
I mean, I'll vote with...
Four. Okay. So obviously, we still have time.
Because it's June 1st.
June 1st? So we still have a meeting between now and...
We're still on the twice-a-month meetings. Counsel, Mayor Katcher?
Right. And again, you know, we want to make it perfectly clear, this is not something that we are pushing one way or the other. This is just something that's come, you know, come down, and we just want you to be aware of it, so that, you know, if we didn't bring it to your attention, and, you know, it has a deadline on it, that's simply it. You know, we are not, you know, making a recommendation one way or the other. It's, you know, totally your prerogative.
Okay, so Counselor Hayes, did you have...
It seems like just a really quick deadline. When did we receive it?
We have, oh.
It's been on the agenda for, at least two meetings, so at least a month over a month, month and a half, probably.
So Counsel Hagan, I say that at your next city council meeting, this will still be on the agenda, this will be discussed?
Right. I will even put it on the Subcommittee agenda again, even though the committee voted on it. For any councilors that want to come down and discuss it further at Subcommittee, and I'll keep it on the agenda and bring it back up for hopefully a vote at the next full second.
And that will be the, April 22nd?
That'll be the April 22nd.
Okay, great. So anyone has questions, want to fill themselves in more, and be sure to attend that meeting so we can be all educated on what we want.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Move the public hearings, Bill.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, open public hearings. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes. Supplemental appropriation, Counselor Hagan first.
Yeah, our first public hearing is a supplemental appropriation. I'll do a second reading dated March 12, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $600,000, and it should be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to snow and ice deficit, and that amount, $600,000. The amount request be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for FY 15 snow and ice deficit. I know the mayor and finance committee, excuse me, the finance, mayor, the finance committee and the finance director all agreed that this is a prudent thing to do, because this year we do have a little more free cash based on some new building in town. In past years, the snow budget, what over snow budget has been passed on to the next fiscal year, which you can do, I believe this year you could even do it over two years. But I believe the mayor and finance director felt that if we could get it taken care of this year, because we have a little free cash, that that would be desirable to them, but certainly mayor, if you want to speak for a moment on it, I know, again, this is 3-0 in committee, and we've talked about it at a couple of meetings.
Right, and this is what we also discussed, well, first of all, you have the budget in front of you tonight. When you start looking at it, just imagine if $600,000 was taken out of it to start off with. So I think it's appropriate time for it, but also, I wanted to let you know that our auditor also advised that this is a better way of dealing with a deficit, which it is, snow and ice deficit, by, you know, taking care of it the year it happens, and this is what the Department of Revenue recommends, and our auditor, our auditor also thinks it's a little on the cleaner side.
Okay.
Just one question, Mayor. I know that it came up that after we did this, if it's passed by the council, there'll still be like, I believe it was a number of like a $270,000 left in free cash.
Yes.
Would that, and we...
I think it was 227, right.
And later, we have a $200,000 new, to move to stabilization. Is that included in that 2?
That's, that...
Or is that in addition?
The 227 is, is free and clear.
Addition, in addition to what we might take up in the...
Yes.
Additional, Counselor Hayes?
Did we think about changing the amount after we got this?
Actually, you know, actually, Counselor Hagan, you know what, I don't have, I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me, but that might be out, that might be taken out of it. What I do is, when I prepare the transfers, I take them right off the top, and so that I know there, I already know that the money's gone, and that's what you're asking. But I think I move that one, so that would be the 17 would be, the 27 would be less, instead of the 227.
So it was the only one?
Instead, the other, the alternative is, it would just roll over anyway. So we figured that we would put it in stabilization, so if for any reason we needed it in, you know, July, August, September, we wouldn't have to wait till free cash comes out. So it's just a matter of moving it. If we don't move it, it rolls over into free cash anyway.
Okay. Counselor Hayes, should...
Did the fact that we got $70,000 from the state to be used for potholes by June 1st have any effect on the idea of using $600,000?
Are you asking me that? Or are you asking the councilors?
I mean, I'll answer, and then, I don't believe it's the same, no, there's the pot money actually goes into the roads where this is for snow and ice removal, so I don't believe it's, it's mixed into that.
Further clarification would be that one money's already spent, and the other is something that we're going to spend on potholes, because I don't think we've spent that on potholes yet.
No, no, it's got strict deadlines, but no. They're just contracting to do that now, and that was, you know, the relief money. That would, they are completely two different things, not related at all.
Additional questions for the mayor? Okay, Counselor Hagan, continue.
If there's no more questions by the councilors, I'll make a motion.
You have nothing more to add?
Nothing more to add.
So if anyone from the public, then, who would like to address the council considering, considering that supplemental appropriation, please come to the podium, not being seen. Okay, Counselor?
Make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve supplemental appropriation, the amount of $600,000, and it be appropriated from free cash in that amount to the snow and ice deficit.
Second.
A motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $600,000 from free cash to the snow and ice deficit. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion passes. That concludes your portion, I believe. Poll location, Counselor Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. In February 25th, we got a request from Eversource to add a additional telephone pole on Coleman Road, that is kind of across from Big Y and that church, and there was a little bit of confusion about where East Hampton was and Southampton was, but they sorted it out, and it is there to help a span of wires that are sagging too low, and we've gone out and taken a look. They had, before the winter hit, a stake as far as where the pole was going to be, but that has since long gone, so we do have some questions on exactly where this pole is going to land. So hopefully, we can get some answers. Bye.
From Eversource, I believe? Okay, if you could just come to the podium and state your name, terrific, and give us your input.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Jerry Mulling-Goski, I'm with our Eversource, Eversource out of our East Springfield office, and as Jennifer stated, we are petitioning for one new pole location on a very short, short section of road, Coleman Road, that exists between South Main Street or Route 10 and the Southampton Town Line. The existing span length that we have from the pole that originates on South Main Street to the first pole in Southampton is very long, it's over 250 feet, and because of that length, it's, it's, the wire has sagged down quite a bit, so we're looking to install So, we're looking to install what we call an intermediate pole to get that wire up to its proper height. And in conjunction with this, we're also looking to reconductor in this area as part of a new circuit that we're running out of our Gunn Substation, which is located at Alliance Street and Phelps Street. We are reconductoring the Southampton length of Coleman Road, and that wire would continue from Southampton out to Route 10, where we would meet the existing conductors. This span being in that area, and the conductor that we're installing will be slightly larger diameter than the existing, which also facilitates the need for that intermediate pole. The, on the petition sketch that we've submitted, the pole location is actually 94 feet westerly, I'm sorry, easterly of the center line of College Highway, and it's approximately six feet off the edge of the road. I did discuss the location with Jim Gracia, and he was fine, he had no opposition to the proposed location. That area is a triangular piece that is owned by the individual that also owns the first house into Southampton, which is known as, it's, look, house number three, but I believe the entirety of the house is actually located in Southampton. And the same owner, as I say, also owns that corner. The town also has a pump station facility, which is in close proximity to this proposed pole location, but it will not conflict with the city's installation. I guess that, you know, that kind of describes the location. There is, yeah, I can, I can restate the location if you?
The drawing is difficult to transpose onto the image, and we just want to make sure the pole isn't in front of this house.
No, I did take measurements, and the pole is 40 feet westerly of the nearest corner of that house. That's along the roadway. It's actually farther than that if you were to go, if you were to, you know, measure diagonally to the, from the pole location to the corner of the house. Yeah, it is not in the frontage of the house per se.
Great.
Additional questions? Counselor Kudzinski?
Just had a quick question. I don't know if the committee may have discussed this already, or you may have an answer to it, but when you're working on the border of two communities, we're the ones that are deciding whether or not to allow for the pole to go in, and yet, the homeowner lives in, doesn't live in our community, they live in another community. I was wondering about notifications, and are they notified? How are they notified? And do they come to the meeting, and do they have an issue?
The house actually looks empty. Drove by, I mean, went to like actually knock on the door because I felt it was important to contact them because of where this house is. They were notified. I don't know if you were able to speak with homeowner?
Well, I spoke with the previous person that lived there that moved out last fall, and they were a tenant.
So, it is empty?
And, yeah, I believe, I can't speak to that. I don't know if it is currently, it looks to be empty, but I believe it's a rental house. And the owner was notified.
So, you sent a certified letter to the owners? How were they notified?
We send out card, or the city sends out cards notifying that a butter of night's here, based on the information that we get from the city, assessors' maps, which state who the owners are.
Even though they're in another community? But the plan, the land that they have is on our assessment rolls? Okay.
Barbara has.
I believe that that's owned by Autumn Properties.
Yes, that's who I had.
So, it's not sent to the tenant, because they're just a tenant.
Right. That's who I had for the?
My concern, just to be sure that there was proper notification, seeing that it's on the border of one community and another. Good, okay.
Additional? Counselor? Not necessarily for his gentleman, you said, what comment? Feeds up your?
Okay, so are there any more questions for?
No, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Just as a clarification, looking at the drawing here, I believe part of this structure is actually in East Hampton. The pole is definitely in East Hampton, and part of the structure is in East Hampton, but it's probably the bedrooms, but probably a Southampton therefore, so it was that. And I know Counselor Hayes made a couple of efforts to go out to look at the area, and that was our main concern, that, you know, we don't like, is a pole placed in someone's window.
Right, no, I, we wouldn't do.
And when the stake was missing, you know, that's what we decided.
No, it is a good distance from the, from the house. I mean, you could see it from the bedroom on this 10, Route 10 side, though. You could see the pole, definitely, but it is not an obstruction.
Not a true.
Not in the front of the house at all. Yeah, it is difficult because it's hard to determine what the line crosses at a diagonal.
And that was one of the reasons we got it as kind of a rush, because initially, they thought it was in Southampton, but then it ended up in East Hampton, so.
Okay. Great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Counselor Hayes, do you have any more information?
No, that does it for me. I'd like to make a motion.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning this placement of the pole on Coleman Road? Please come. Okay, not being seen. Okay, now, Counselor?
I move that the city council approve the location of one jointly owned pole labeled L-35/1 on the East Hampton side of Coleman Road, approximately 94 feet from the intersection with the South Main Street, and that the petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on the pole for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Second. Okay. We have a motion a second for the approval of the pole located on Coleman Road. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
A second. Motion a second to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Let's go back to, are you still going?
I just have the new business.
I can do that now, sure.
There are a couple of items of new business that I'd like to do a first reading on and move to committee. The first is a supplemental appropriation dated April 8th. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $22,000. Be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount and appropriated to the water portable chlorinator capital for $22,000. The amount request be used for the following purpose: to provide funds to purchase a portable chlorinator for the water department. And I'll do a first reading on a second supplemental appropriation. This one is also dated April 8th. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $200,000. Be appropriated from free cash in that amount, $200,000, and appropriated to the general stabilization fund. Amount request be used for the following purpose: to transfer free cash to the general stabilization fund. And I would make a motion to move both of those supplemental appropriations to Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Motion a second to move the supplemental appropriations of $22,000 and $200,000 to Finance. Any additional comments or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes Finance.
Move. Public Safety, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we had a request for the street acceptance, the Paul Street Extension. We've reached out to Attorney Kemp to have a discussion about this light post that's in the cul-de-sac. We have some questions about who's going to be responsible for that. We don't know if that's municipality lighting it, or if it's the right size. It looks kind of off the shelf, so to speak. And we also wanted to wait until the snow and debris was kind of cleared off so we could take a look at the street itself before we move forward with acceptance. And we're just waiting to hear back from Attorney Kemp. We are continuing our review of the street acceptance protocols, and I'm going to ask to remove the joint pole location on Coleman Road, Route 10, from our agenda.
We'd have to, we voted on it, so it's, it comes off.
And then, should I do new business now?
Yeah, so, Counselor, you do want to vote on it, so why don't you move it to committee, and then you can address it.
Sorry?
So, yeah, just make a motion to move the petition for the Williston Avenue to committee.
Okay. So, motion to move the Williston Avenue emergency pole repair to committee. Second.
Motion a second to move the pole location on Williston Avenue to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, now that it's technically on your agenda, we can, we can talk about the urgency aspect of it.
Okay, so, April 6th, we received an email. There was a utility pole that is leaning, becoming really unstable in the, next to Nash Pond, where we're doing the boardwalk. And Verizon has asked us to kind of expedite looking at this, because they're afraid, just with the activity, and they need to pour cement, and a lot of activity needs to happen in that area, that they could get out there and repair it right away. So, we met on Monday, and Paul Davis, do you have a moment?
Sure.
Okay, yes, if you could, please, come to the podium.
This is an engineer from the company, so he came out, and he spent about 45 minutes looking at how we could make this pole safer and what exactly our options were, so.
Obviously, thank you for coming, and if you could just fill out, obviously, the counsel on the emergency aspect of it, as well as the options and stuff. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, if you could just state your name for the break as well.
Yeah. Name's Paul Davis. I'm a design engineer for a company by the name of UC Synergetic out of Sunderland. We do engineering design work for Verizon. We're contracted by Verizon, and I am here tonight on behalf of Verizon, speaking for them. So, basically, long story short, there's a pole right over here, as Jennifer said, Pole one, that is leaning roughly four to five feet out of level towards the pond, roughly intruding against the boardwalk that's being built now. So, as she said, we had a meeting Monday night in regards to the resolution of supporting that pole, because currently now, that pole is unguided and unsupported. That's the reason why it's leaning towards the pond. So, the resolution that we discussed to that problem is that a pole needs to be placed across the street in the grassy area here in front of this building to provide support for that pole. So, basically, what that pole will be technically, in our terms, would be called a stub pole. And that stub pole only provides support for the angle that's on that pole out on the street. And again, that pole was being petitioned to be placed out front here with an anchor also six feet behind it, out front of this building as well. So, with that being said, I answered all questions, and I think, basically, the three councils that were there understood what I was getting at with the resolution. So, I'd be more willing to take questions if anybody else has questions.
Okay, I have a quick question for you. So, the, this pole that, the stub pole, is this, would this also be a permanent location for this pole?
It would be a permanent location for the petition pole, correct.
Okay. Counselor Rist?
As a city engineer, seen and approved all this.
As far as I know, no. The first initial meeting that was made, or had out here, which was roughly two weeks ago, there was a Verizon engineer, an electric company engineer, and a counselor from, or somebody from the public.
It was Jessica.
Safety Board, I guess. Met out front here. So, to answer your question, technically, no.
Unfortunately, Counselor, President McCoy, I have to leave, but I would like to urge the council to include in the motion that the city engineer approve this prior to it being done. I think we always have the city engineer involved in this kind of stuff, and I know that it's probably simple, and I just think that Jim Gracia should know what's going on and make sure that there's nothing overlooked in this haste to do this. So, I'd ask that the council include it in the motion somehow, that the city engineer, pending city engineer approval, this can be emergently done tonight. And if that's not possible, then I have a problem with it, but I won't be able to vote. I must apologize, I have to leave. So, thank you.
Okay. So, again, what is, obviously, emergency, probably can't say, what, how, how tight do you think this pole has?
Tough to say.
This could be veteran.
In my, in my career, I've seen way worse poles than this. However, you just don't know. I mean, I, personally, I don't think it'll go, but the problem is, is that it's impeding against the progress of the boardwalk, and that, from what they were telling me, they want to pour concrete next week, and in order to straighten, try to straighten the pole, get it properly supported, that type of thing, it would impede against that construction. So, I don't think it's necessarily a matter whether the pole's going to go or not, it's just a matter of it impeding the progress of the project at this point.
Counselor, any?
It was also brought up that, safety-wise, that pole going down the side of it harbors a lot of electrical conduits. So, should that pole, if we get, we didn't plan on the first microburst, but if we get something like that, and that pole breaks and goes into the pond, it could be very, very dangerous.
Yes, it could.
Okay, additional questions, Counselor Hayes?
Just another comment. I mean, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to deal with the entire situation in a more aesthetic way, because there's even the pole at the corner that's heavily weighed down, and there's, I think, some issues with the way that those guys are done as well. And obviously, it would have been better to have everything just like buried down the line at the beginning of the project, but apparently, that was cost prohibitive. We don't know what that number was. But, so what this is going to do is it's going to put a guy wire across the street, and then we're going to have a pole in front of Fifty Payson, and it's one of the shorter poles, so it's not one of the larger ones. I think you said it was 35 feet.
It'll be a 35-foot pole, correct.
And just like a, like a tent pole. So, that'll come across the street, and there'll be a guy wire for that as well.
Right.
But there'll be no electricity or any kind of utilities on that pole at all. It's strictly just to support. But it's the only way to put it, is across the street because of everything that's going on. And it was asked that this get expedited, because when they do pour the cement, they want it all to cure at the same time so that we don't have like discoloration, different waves in it, or, you know, it just, it'll be better to do it all at the same time.
Okay. Just, I guess, I'll wait, we don't, have you seen, are there any more questions for our guests before, Counselor Kudzinski?
I've just had a chance to go out and look at this, and there seems to be another pole on the other side of the driveway that isn't as tall, or it's a location where there's a light that's, I don't know, are you familiar with the pole?
Nope.
He's talking about the one over by the entrance to the parking lot.
Yeah, all you have to do is.
It's too far away.
If you'd like, you can go take a peek. I presume you gave that consideration and made a determination that it was too far away, or it wasn't appropriate?
I don't know what Paulie's talking about, so I can't speak to it. I can go look at it if you want to look at it.
We'll take a five minute recess.
One minute.
One minute. Sorry, you got a second. Sorry. Is there another place out that way?
It's over by the entrance.
Jen, I think on the motion.
You do know this is right from my window?
Oh, no.
Did you get a letter, a butter letter?
Did we send you a letter, Azia Butter?
It will be a permanent, just put emergency first. See where?
The second paragraph does not seem.
No. Oh, never mind, I took it out.
I know, but.
I didn't take it out, I took it out.
Would have loved to have gotten it buried.
I printed my copy. Really not seeing it.
Far away.
It's been a long time since I've been on Subcommittee. Does Jim Gracia usually sign off on poles?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
Thank you for the reason.
Yeah.
My only thought was that.
Because we were really sure where the line was.
Are we back in? Yes, I'm sorry, we're back into session.
My only thought was that if that pole could be used, or a new pole could be put in this other location, it would be less obtrusive to the appearance of our building. But if it can't be used, it can't be used.
Yeah, just an explanation to your question, not to get too technical. The angle of that pole, it's not a bisecting angle, meaning that pole one has a corner on it, that corner has a bisecting section to it. If you were to put the guy to that pole over there, it would pull that pole towards that pole. So, we want to keep that pole one, which is leaning towards the pond, straight, we want to pull it this way, and the bisecting angle is the angle where that proposed pole is going to go, basically.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for our guests? Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
All right.
All right.
Maybe not go anywhere in case something pops up. Thank you. Counselor Hayes, do you have anything more?
I don't. Do we want to see if there's anybody else from the public?
Yeah, exactly. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the counsel concerning this pole placement not being seen? Okay, back to you.
Well, seeing as nobody else has any input on this, I would like to make a motion that we move that in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the City Council approve the emergency placement of one jointly owned pole number T dot 1S slash E dot 193 dash 1S on the northwesterly side of Williston Avenue at a point approximately 78 feet southwesterly from the center line of Payson Avenue to provide lateral support to pole T dot 1 backslash E dot 193 dash 1 located on the southeasterly side of Williston Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Now, I... We had a brief discussion during that recess with the city clerk. Is it typical that we have the city engineer sign off on pole locations? And it's not typical that... He usually doesn't. The only reason why he did on the Coleman Road, again, was there was some question, I think, as far as where the city line was? Was that why he was involved? So it is not typical that the city engineer signs off on pole locations. But if someone wants to make that motion, Counselor Rist suggested we could entertain it, but I just wanted to put that information out there in case.
Well, I would ask for an amendment to include that language.
Okay, so we have...
Based on Counselor Rist's comments, and I believe the city engineer might have some comments. It's always good to... I think it is a good policy.
Okay, wait. So is there a second for that motion?
No second.
Okay, a motion of second to add the provision that our city engineer, Jim Gracia, signs off on this pole location before it is approved. Any discussion on that amendment? Counsel Hayes?
The request from Counsel Rist was that the city engineer sign off on the plans.
On the plans, not...
On the location.
Okay. Signs off on the plans, okay. Any additional comments or question? Counselor?
No, go ahead, sir. I was just going to say that, you know, I'm fine with this. I just want to make sure that we don't delay the project, and I don't know what his schedule is because I feel like if this is, you know, pressing and he has a full schedule and is not going to be able to get to this in the next week or two, you know, I don't... I feel like I don't want to... If this isn't standard practice, I don't want to delay the project for this if he's not going to have the time or ability to take it on. And I don't think we know that. So not knowing that, I don't know that I can support it.
Okay. Counsel Winnie?
We've done, in 15 years, hundreds of these, and our city engineer, Mr. Gracia, has never been involved in any of these pole relocations, placements, any of it. So I... Yeah, I'm just against the motion. I just want this to go forward so that we can get these people out here because it's now spring, so they're going to be doing a lot of stuff in the area. I think it's crucial that we get them out here to get this done so that we can move forward with the boardwalk.
Okay. Any... Counsel Hagan?
Just a quick comment. Again, I would have no problem with the city engineer looking at it, but certainly I will agree with Salem and Joy with that, you know, I don't want to hold up the project if there is a holdup. I mean, most likely, he probably could look at it, but again, I wouldn't... Again, the pole locations that I've been involved in, I don't remember him necessarily going out, because there's always other engineers involved, either from Verizon or EverSource or whoever the pole is that comes.
Okay. Any other comments before we take a vote on this motion? Okay, so this is, again, if you are in favor of that motion, it would be an aye. If you don't want the provision for the involvement of the city engineer, it would be nay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
One aye. All those against?
No. Nay.
Okay, so motion fails. So we are back to the original motion, which I believe there was a second on. So any discussion on that amendment, that motion? No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Okay. Counsel... Anything more, Counselor Hayes, or is that...
Yes, we do need to set a public hearing.
Yes.
Because it was an emergency.
Right.
So what we did is we met very quickly on Monday to discuss this because we wanted to get it done. We wanted to give everybody the ability to be able to fix this as quickly as possible. So thank you for your vote tonight. But we would like to still do a public hearing on this, and I've scheduled that for May 6th.
Okay.
May 6th.
So a formal motion?
So in the form of motion, I'd like to set up a public hearing for the emergency location of the pole on Williston Avenue for May 6th.
Hey, a motion of second for setting the public hearing for the pole location on Williston Avenue. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay. Appointments, Counsel Winnie. You can move the new business if you'd like, Counsel Winnie.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we have four appointments, mayoral appointments. I'd like to make this in the form of a motion that we move them to Appointment Subcommittee. The appointments of Dennis Lacourse for Board of Health, Carol Abbey Smith to Development and Industrial Committee, Thomas W. Brown, Development Industrial Committee, and Clay Crowe to Development Industrial Committee.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second. Okay, motion of second. Counsel Winnie, I would just like to request, I have heard just some questioning as far as Mr. Lacourse's appointment, so could we handle that like some of the other appointments and maybe have that done separately?
Yeah, and I can also ask that Mr. Lacourse come, and we can schedule the meeting for 5 o'clock.
Okay.
On May 6th downstairs. And we can have Mr. Lacourse come if anybody has any questions that they want to discuss with them. We could do that.
That sounds great.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. And does that conclude, then?
That concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on April 7th with the Planning Board in a joint public hearing to discuss the building size cap. We met again on April 14th, which was yesterday, to discuss the building size cap. And I'm happy to say that we have had a very collaborative, fruitful discussion and revisions of the ordinance. It is very close. However, when we deal with zoning, the issues tend to arise out of other areas that might not be directly related to what we're doing, which seems to be the case in this particular ordinance. So while we are closing in very quickly on the building size cap, there are some other issues that are kind of percolating to the surface that we're seeing are going to be needing addressing at some point. So right now, the city planner is kind of taking some of those pieces out of the language that was in front of us so we can focus more on the building size cap. So our next meeting is not going to be until May 12th. Let me just make sure.
21st?
It's, nope, it's May 12th. It's Tuesday at 6:00 PM. It's a joint hearing with the Planning Board. And I'm hoping at that time there will be some resolution to the specific, you know, ordinance suggestion of the 50,000 square foot size cap. Very close. So that's that piece. I do want to say that we are meeting on April 22nd. So April 22nd is next Tuesday... Or, no, next Wednesday. I'm sorry.
Next meeting is the 20th.
And that is for the LED sign ordinance. So it's another joint public hearing.
Joint. Do you know what time that is?
I believe it's 6:00.
Because I know you were one of the councils who raised their hand about the net spending, so... Which is also at 6:00 on that same date.
Right.
I don't know if that's...
Right. Well, maybe... They might have some other business, so maybe I can scoot out before, and we'll see.
Maybe you could talk to the chair. They can shuffle that.
Yeah. And, you know, I just want to... I want to double check because I'm noticing that's a Wednesday, and Planning Board doesn't normally meet on Wednesdays, and I can't remember if we scheduled that specifically on a Wednesday on purpose because they normally meet on Tuesdays.
I'm going to double check here.
But I believe it's the 22nd.
Mm-hmm.
It is the 22nd.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So, and it's advertised.
Okay.
So that is the LED sign issue. And we are going to meet as a committee, hopefully all of us, if we can make it, on that 22nd as well after our joint hearing with the Planning Board, and we're going to schedule that for 6:45 on Wednesday, April 22nd. Hopefully, I'm getting all these dates right. I'm saying a lot of dates here.
It's April 22nd. I'm not sure where.
And we're not sure where.
Okay.
So...
In this building?
Somewhere in this building.
Okay.
And on that note, I do... I would like to... I think we're going to have resolution on the classification and pay plan position title. So I would like to make a motion to have a public hearing on May 6th in these chambers.
Second. If you have a motion of second to set a public hearing for the classification of pay plan position on May 6th? Any additional discussion?
6:15?
6:15, yeah. Public hearing. 6:15, May 6th. Motion of second for the setting the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. And that concludes, McCoy. Okay, I'll just take out that extra. Property, Counsel Ziewer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The property subcommittee met this evening at 5:30 down in Conference Room B, and we began the discussion on the consideration of removing the affordable housing restriction on 154 Everett Street. We do need some more information based on what we had come up with so far, so we will seek out that information. It has to do with CPA funds that were used and a memorandum of understanding, but we will reconvene again. A time and date to be determined, and continue the conversation. We'd also discussed that we would like to seek what assistance can be done for cleaning up the property, which currently has overgrown grass and it sounded like a fuel tank, automotive fuel tank, sitting in the front lawn. We will follow up on that as well. That concludes.
Thank you. Gone old business. We do have a new business, Counsel Kozinski. Do you want to introduce your...
Yes, we had... You may have heard about the electricity rate increases that have happened and then the recalculation of someone's bill after they've switched to another company, if it